Administrative Policy and Rules Committee Chairman, Councilman Pryor is the Chairman of that committee. Human Resources Committee Vice Chair Kibrowski is the Chair of that committee. Environmental Management Committee, Mr. Moody is the Chairperson of that committee. And then we will conclude with the Finance Committee. So those who are following us in your packets, that's the, that's the order in which the committees will be called. So we will now begin with our special County Council meeting. Number one, the Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news medias and persons requesting notification.
Thank you so much. And it, let me also say that, you know, I am always one to correct the record. And if mistakes have been made in real time, if we can, you know, correct those, we will. And there was a misunderstanding on last Tuesday. And so we have Board of Trustee member, Library Board of Trustee member Alyssa Bertolucci, who's here tonight. She was scheduled, she did speak, but you know, there was some confusion about what she was able to say. We allowed another Board of Trustee member to say specifically what she wanted to say. And so we invite Ms. Bertolucci tonight at the top of this meeting. She could not be here on another Tuesday based on some reasons. And so we're asking Ms. Bertolucci if you would come at this time.
Counsel, and thank you specifically to Reverend Middleton.
I'm sorry. So they're reminding me to give you two minutes.
Okay, that's fine. Starting now.
Yes.
This is what I had prepared. My name is Alyssa Bertoluzzi, 7426 Jenkins Hill Road, Edesto Island. My perspective regarding taking the constitutional oath by the boards under the purview of this council comes from two personal involvements. First, I have been covering this council for a year now for a report produced by a committee that I chair for the Charleston County Republican Party. So I am aware of how much commitment and work your jobs are. Secondly, I am one of the new members of the Charleston County Public Library Board of Trustees. So I have attended every formal meeting of the board and heard all those discussions. As a new member, I have made every effort to learn about the library, including visiting 11 of the 18 branches. There are many good projects and services provided by the library. My position as an individual is being in favor of taking the oath to the Constitution. I took it to become a notary. I have taken it and administered it, working for the Board of Elections as a poll worker. It reinforces and reminds us that we are stewards for the public and have a responsibility to follow the law. In the case of the library, with a budget of approximately 40 million of taxpayer dollars, it seems like law following is a reasonable expectation. On March 11th, this County Council voted to have Charleston County and Charleston County only have their boards take the oath. Madam Clerk's presentation identified that this would apply to 11 boards. However, the presentation she gave allowed the opportunity for procedural issues to be used to reverse that route. Let me help you out. As a willing taker of the oath, I downloaded a form from Secretary of State's site, filled it out, specified the relevant board, signed it, had it notarized, mailed it in February 28th. I have not had it returned, refused, or questioned by the Secretary of State. Please don't let paperwork be a reason to disregard the state law to take the oath. And Charleston County constituents deserve to have critical members of all relevant boards following the law. And if there's any time left, which there's not, I just wanted to mention, because my name got called out specifically by Adrian Lett a few weeks ago, saying that I was a member of Moms for Liberty. I am not a member of Moms for Liberty. I'm not sure where she got her information from. I do stand with them in their concern about sexually explicit material for whether it's homosexual or heterosexual regarding our use. So I just want to mention that. Thank you for letting me come back. I appreciate specifically Mr. Darby, Mr. Kibrowski, and Reverend Middleton for reaching out and inviting me to come back.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we appreciate your service. At this time, item number two, an executive session item, Grantham Homes LLC versus Charleston County Historic Preservation Commission, Charleston County, South Carolina, 2024-CP-10-06318-2024-CP-010-06319 and 2024-CP-10-06320. Madam Attorney.
Yes, sir. There's a need for an executive session for legal advice with regards to the matter and the cases that you read out on the agenda.
Thank you so much. We're going to suspend our special County Council meeting at this time, and we will take that executive session properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. Thank you so much. We will suspend our County Council, Special County Council meeting at this time, and we will take that executive session up with the others when they come. At this time, we turn this over to Mr. Pryor, our Administrative Policy and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our Administration Policy Rules Committee. We have two items on the agenda. Mr. Darby, Ms. Honeycutt, and Mr. Sass is on this committee as well as the Chairman, and I am the Chair of this committee. Item number one, approval of minutes.
Moved.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion, or deletion, or addition? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, eyes have it. Item number two is-
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the amendment.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
All opposed, eyes have it. This will go to our next County Council meeting on Tuesday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. The next committee meeting will be our Human Resources Committee. Vice Chair Kibrowski is the Chair.
Thank you. I'm the Chair, and Mr. Darby, Councilman Sass, and Councilman Werman are members of this committee. Approval of the minutes of March 20th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Or say aye.
Aye.
The only other item is the evaluation of the County Council employees, discussion of their evaluations. Is there any motion for here or executive session?
I move that we do that in executive session.
Is there a second for that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We move to executive session. Is that now, or?
We will suspend the Human Resources Committee meeting, and we will take that up when we go into executive session later.
To adjourn the meeting?
No, not yet.
Get a session first, sorry.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kibrowski, our Environmental Management Committee. Mr. Moody is the Chair.
Chairman Middleton, myself, Mrs. Honeycutt, Mr. Pryor, Mr. Werman. Chairman sits on all committees. First item is the approval of minutes from last year.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second, and changes, deletions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Number two, solid waste disposition update. Mr. Thomas Q. is with us today, I believe, to give us some updates on all things environmental management.
Nice to see you all again. Current state of the landfill, these very landfill, currently have 17 years remaining. My experience, it takes seven years to permit and site a new landfill. So that basically gives us 10 years to get something done here. It is very urgent that we start now to look for property to do this. I have three-pronged ideas on how we address this. It really won't take that long to explain. First, and the one I prefer, create an RFQ. We have to hire a firm to handle this project. It's completed and currently being reviewed by legal qualifications, engineering, geological and environmental expertise, public relations experience preferred. After a firm is chosen, connect real estate with this firm against getting potential landfill location. Put this particular firm on a one-year timeline, can be renewed at the end of it if we are pleased. I've got a lot of experience with having, you know, finding locations. That's what I actually did in my last job. And I did it in New England, which is basically impossible to do, but I did it anyway. I sided two landfills. Part two on this is not something that I really want to get into too much right now, but it's possibly may go outside our county and dealing with other counties in a partnership. That is something that is very complex, and it would be political as heck, and that's not for me to, you know, make any call on that. So that is something just to keep in your back pocket. There is a Plan Three that I have that I think can coincide with finding a landfill site in Charleston County. I did some math on the existing landfill. This is, this certainly won't be a permanent fix, but I believe I found a way. I had an engineer there with me the other day, and we walked in, we talked, and I have some stats and numbers that I will forward to all of you to look at. This is not a final solution. Even with possibility of extended time, there is an equal possibility that we will miss out on a potential track for a long-term resolution. In other words, we need to focus on getting property for a landfill in Charleston County. That's what we need to do. This is a complicated process. I've done it twice, and there's no guarantee of getting DES, EPA, environmental engineers, everybody to agree on letting us expand. There is a thing called a vertical expansion. We're at a max of 172. The way it's engineered right now, anything more than 50 feet would just be a waste of time. 50 feet would get us to 222 feet. That would add about three or four years to our life, just doing a vertical expansion on all the existing sites. Okay? All existing areas, letting us go up to 220. That is something very possible. DES and regulatory agencies prefer vertical to horizontal because you're not taking up any new property. So the vertical is, doesn't affect anybody. You don't get any closer than anybody else, just grow up higher. And the people that are right next to the landfill, they basically can see it from ground zero right now. So, you know, another 50 feet is something to consider. The necessity, if we don't, we don't have a landfill in the county or focused solely for the county or primarily for the county, this is what's going to happen. And these are things that are real-world numbers, okay? If we look to our neighbors to accept the disposal responsibility for Charleston County, here are the issues. There are no guarantees on availability, longevity, or price. So for instance, Berkeley County over the course of six months went from $56 a ton for C and D to $100, all right? We would have no control over that. We have no control over them having enough and telling us that we can't, we can no longer dispose at their landfill. I've spoken to Dorchester Waste Management, Republic, and they're all the same. They are primary customers that pay their bills. We would not be primary. We would be, we're important, but we wouldn't be primary because they can charge a lot more to other people. And when they decide that they've had enough and they run out of airspace, then what do we do? So finding one is, for us here in Charleston County, is really important. This is the one fact that I just want to give everyone. Here's the one that should explain the importance of finding a site as soon as possible. The taxpayers currently pay $150 user fee to have their waste collected, trucked, and disposed or recycled. If our landfill is not available, here are the real-world numbers, real-world numbers for the trucking solution. The fee to truck to transfer stations would be on top of, we still have a user fee because, I don't know, but if we still have it, it would still be an additional $25 per ton. I've asked a couple of haulers and a couple other sites, and they gave me kind of consistent numbers. That's with the user fee, $25 per ton just to get it to the transfer station. At the transfer station, it would be another $35 to $40 per ton to transfer to an agreeable landfill. Again, we go back to landfills, no guarantees. They can just say no. The disposal rate currently at Berkeley is $57 per ton. So just put those three numbers together, and there is an additional $112 per ton. We do 200,000 tons at the landfill. You can multiply that by 112, and that's the number that taxpayers and we would be looking at. We need to find a piece of property, and it needs to bear priority. The scary option is only temporary because the transfers have limits, as do the landfills. There are no guarantees. And there are, of course, other things. We're trucking it all over the place to get rid of our waste. There are environmental concerns, carbon footprint expands, safety on the roads, or all those trucks run all over God's creation to find a place to dump. So I guess I've said it enough. It's important that we consider and we get on it looking for property. Okay? That's enough. If anybody has any questions, I'm standing here.
Any questions? Mr. Werman.
Thank you, Mr. Q. So you said you've got an RFQ going to get a firm engaged to start this process?
Yes, sir.
That sounds good.
That's enough. That's enough? Okay, good. Thanks.
Other questions?
Mr. Q., thank you, and I've been stressing the need to have you come and make this presentation because the urgency has got to be there. Because we've got, we can't lose control of our landfill. We can't lose control of our options. Incinerator, I know that we got rid of that one downtown, but is the technology change such that we could consider that now, or is that too-
It has, but it's not an easy siding either with DES. They're not really crazy about burning, you know, but it's a possibility. It's a lot of work, but, you know, something we can consider.
Okay. Other questions? Do you have a display you needed to show us or anything?
I was going to show you the property, the existing property.
Yeah, come on up so we can see you.
A little closer for me to see. Okay. Here were phases one and two. They would close at 30 feet high. We're allowed to go to 172 feet. They were closed because there were fires, and New Era came in and, yeah, but I have done this before where we can request DES that we will line the top of the existing 30 feet and build off of that one. So that would give us more time. We have, the biggest section that bothers me is we have composting here, all right? We're all for composting. I am, everybody else is. If, in fact, we could move that, we could possibly get 20 years out of our landfill, okay? That's a nice number. On top of the 17 we have, so now we're close to 40 here. I'll be dead, you'll be on your own. And then there's one and two, do us the same thing. There's a, there's a pit over here that was just, right here, was just water, runoff water. We dug dirt, covered dirt with it from that dirt, and it became a pond. It is 60 feet down, and that could be permitted also for waste. Okay? The problem with that is, it's so far down, we would have to put about 20 feet of protective soil in between. That's about 500,000 yards of dirt. And that, the only cost of dirt right now is really expensive. Another reason to get, you know, a piece of property. And I have a little, a little picture of all this with my notes on it. I'll be happy to send it to you if you all think, look.
So if we were to move that site, the composting, how much property would we need? How much acres would we need to move it to?
Well, they're, right now, they're using 20 acres. So that's what we need. It's not huge. They would probably want more, but I mean, you know.
So we need another 20, 20 to 25 acres?
Yeah. I was thinking of putting them, we have to get approved by DES. There are a lot of things we'd be standing within existing landfill. But we'd have to, DS, they are at the same level of composting as a MSW landfill is, as far as close to people, close to, we can't just pop, because there are some areas, but that would be too close to the neighbors, and we can't do that. Because they're held in the same level as just dumping trash there. So moving them, it's an option, but you'll have to consider.
Mr. Werman?
Well, I think you're, I think you're kind of speaking to the question I have, but maybe, I guess, it sort of begs the question, it's like, is it easier to site and more landfill, or is it easier to find a site for the composting? It's, I'm getting the vibe that it's easier to do the landfill, or at least that it's not much different.
No, the side of landfill is the hardest thing you have to cite. We go into people's homes, areas, their neighborhoods, and tell them, we're going to dump the county's trash. So it's not easy. So we need a wide-open area where we can have a buffer that keeps us away from everybody so they don't feel the impact of it. It's a non-issue with them. As far as composting, composting has some orders, but we've actually done a good job. McGill is the company that does our composting. They've done a good job keeping orders to a minimum when they flip them occasionally. And I do have a picture. I go home behind, you know.
Because the feedback is picking up, right?
So composting plant is a lot more attractive to people. There's no waste. It's just green. It's just, you know, trees and sticks. And now if we do food composting, that's the dangerous one. That's not dangerous, but that's the one that, well, McGill loves having because it's the highest-paid one, but it also is the one that keeps us from going closer to the property. It's like, if they insisted just on green waste, we can move them in the landfill, but they won't do that. They will just, they want their compost, they want their, again, compost.
Well, I was just going to say, it sounds like we're going to have to, we're going to site select for landfill anyways. You might as well at least try and do that on the front end.
Enough when we can bring everybody with us.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
That was going to be my question. Can we amend this RFQ, or at least in the RFQ selection process, find somebody that can also be looking for a compost site?
Yeah, that is actually in the RFQ. Yeah. Give you somebody to help us out with all of that.
Any other questions?
Mr. Q., I was going to piggyback on what Mrs. Honeycutt just said. Is it maybe not financially feasible, but can you, can you be running a site selection firm while also preparing to expand vertically the landfill that we have right now so that if we can't find anything? So we've got these two trucks going down the road at the same time, so if one, we don't, you know, we don't leave this one at the station while this one's going?
No, no. I think we should do both simultaneously.
Okay. Mr. Boykin?
Mr. Q., thank you for that informative presentation. If we can use where the composting is going on now for landfill purposes and we do the vertical, the combination of doing both of those, can you give me an estimate of what that might look for extending the life of the landfill?
We get the composting, all of it, and we extend, you know, get a vertical 25 to 30 years extra. We're at 17.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I would simply just note that when this moves forward, you know, it is in my district, I do live on the backside of all of this, that you come and have a little charette with the community, because they will be calling me right on up and at my doorstep, you know, when the landfill goes up and when we start doing various other things where they already have been vocal about what's currently going on there. And when we start doing other things that extends the life and builds upon what's already currently there, I think we need to inform the community.
Of course. Have they been complaining lately?
Not lately.
We found that when they flipped the composting piles, we're saying, do wind rolls, they don't explode, they're going to fire. They released a lot of odor for two nights, and everybody was very mad. It was not the landfill, it was the compost. I did go over and tell them all, explained it to them. I offered them to come on over with their children. And we have a good relationship with a lot of them. We met a couple of new people, but it can be based in common sense, so that is, that's a good group to talk to. And also, we passed our 27th consecutive inspection two days ago, so we're on the right track. DES likes us right now.
Anything else? Mr. Q., thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Excellent presentation. I understand there's a need for an executive session. Mr. Attorney, would you like to tell us what, exactly what we need to do?
Sure. There's a need for an executive session for a contractual matter with regards to the collection contract that we have with Republic.
Mr. Pryor? Moved. Second by Ms. Honeycutt. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, eyes have it. We're going to suspend, suspend this meeting and handle all executive sessions at once, Mr. Middleton, I understand. Thank you so much. And now we're going to move right into our Finance Committee meeting. Item number one, approval of minutes of March 20th. Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppusers, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you so much. And today, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to all and present to everybody Mayor William Cogswell from the wonderful city of Charleston, who's here tonight. And we're going to go right over here, Mayor. Who's going to introduce for us, Ms. Gianna Shaw Johnson. Years ago, I was a part of a committee that was a part of the city of Charleston, North Charleston, the county, that contemplated some sort of regional housing something. And somehow that was derailed and went off the tracks. And as the mayor and I meet and talk regularly, we recognize that there may be an opportunity that may present itself, you know, for us to resume those conversations. So Mayor Cogswell, and please also introduce Ms. Shaw Johnson as you give your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad to be here today. And of course, as pointed out, I'm here to talk about the possibility of a regional partnership on a growing issue that we all collectively have, and that is the issue on homelessness. Now, to be honest with you, this was not an issue that I was very passionate about or knowledgeable about until I was elected Mayor of the city of Charleston. But like a lot of things, I have been drinking from the fire hose and gotten a lot of calls on this growing issue. So I've learned a lot in the past year. I've learned a lot from my predecessor, Mayor Teklenburg, who had a real passion for this issue. I've learned a lot from my staff, particularly Ms. Gianna Shaw Johnson, who's here with us tonight and you'll hear from, and Latasha Jenkins, who runs our Hope Center. I've learned a lot from various nonprofits, faith-based organizations, law enforcement, other cities and communities that are addressing this issue. And the issue is not an easy one to address or solve. But we've come up with an idea that we'd like for you all to consider partnering with us on. And it is a regionable, regional, collaborative, flexible, and scalable. And ultimately, what it would do is provide 60 to 80 individual units, temporary housing units, on a site that is centrally located and owned by the city on the neck area. A place for those that fall through the cracks, those that are not able to go to most of the churches or to organizations like 180 Place because they have addiction issues or mental health issues. It is a place where they can get rapid around services and get help and back out on their feet. So I think it provides an incredible opportunity for us as a region to come together. And to get into the specifics on the operations, I'm going to ask Ms. Johnson to come up, and then I'll wrap it up with some of the financial breakdowns to conclude. So thank you.
Ms. Shaw Johnson, I'm not certain if you would need to control it, so if you would come to this-
That's okay, because I'm not going to do much from this. We wanted you all to have that for information purposes. So thank you, Chair Middleton, and good evening to all of you. Thank you for your service. I am Gianna Shaw Johnson. I direct the city's Department of Housing and Community Development, and we are very pleased to have this opportunity to present to you this evening. In fiscal year 2023, 12,376 citizens in South Carolina are recorded as having received homeless assistance from service providers utilizing the Homeless Management Information System, those of us in this industry call it HMIS, and from the United Way's 211 Call Center. More than 57% of its callers requesting crisis services, meaning they needed help immediately. In the Low Country, we have experienced a 22% increase in chronic homelessness. And essentially, what chronic homelessness means is persons have been on the street or in buildings that are not made for human habitation because of their condition since 2023 as well. And so as you all have heard, and before I go any further, I will advise you that much of the information that I am quoting from is from the State Homelessness Interagency Council. And so it's data that has been collected and verified, and so you can certainly access that information. What it, what it tells us is that the issue of homelessness is growing. And it is growing simultaneously, as you all know, with the issue of affordable and attainable housing, which all of our local governments are addressing as we speak. One of the things we must do is give this issue attention so that it is not exacerbated and we don't find in our beautiful community where we're literally walking over our homeless neighbors on the sidewalks. And so in 2022, the city of Charleston opened what we refer to as the Hope Center. Simultaneous to that, we formed a nonprofit called Homeless to Hope, Inc., that also works in concert with the Hope Center. And what Dr. Kylan referred to earlier was the Mayor's Commission on Homelessness and Affordable Housing that in fact helped the city facilitate that effort. They were simply an advisory council. They were not a commission or a committee, but they came together from various communities across our region to help us address this issue. That organization, the Mayor's Commission, was pivotal in helping us raise $4.3 million, which we hold now to go towards a permanent Hope Center and to facilitate helping those that are unsheltered and find themselves in this condition. So what we are talking about today, in addition to the Hope Center, that provides a plethora of services to those that are unsheltered and those that are vulnerable. And when I say a plethora, that means everything from job training, a shower, the ability to wash your clothing, the ability to use the bathroom, the ability to be inside when there is inclement weather. There are a plethora of services that are provided to provide a level of sufficiency. And I would say to us, it is a hand up, not a hand- us, it is a hand up, not a hand out. We work in concert with 180 Place and a number of partners, the Department of Mental Health, in order to provide these services in the most excellent way. One of the things that is missing is part of this, because it is not housing, it is housing referral, is what Mayor Cogswell is bringing before the county today. We need housing for these individuals. In many cases, our federal government no longer funds transitional or temporary housing. They want the funding to go to permanent housing, and that makes sense, correct? It does. But many of us would tell you, what do we do in the middle of getting someone from homelessness to permanent housing? Many of these people are on the streets, they're in garages, they're under cars sleeping, especially when it's cold. And so, what we are saying to you all today, as we've said to our council is, the housing that Mayor Cogswell will present to you in the budget is called rapid or pallet housing. Essentially, it can be constructed very quickly. It provides a bed within the structure. It provides an HVAC unit that produces both heat and AC, and we know how important that is in Charleston. And it provides a closet for individuals to have their clothing and belongings. Right now, if you visit 529 Meeting Street, there are two pallet housings that are constructed that you could actually see what it looks like. And so, what we are asking today is your support of that. What we want to do as we think about building the new Hope Center, which will be a building owned by the city of Charleston, we will include on the same campus or in the same vicinity what we call pallet or rapid housing. Mayor Cogswell mentioned 60 to 80. These individuals will be able to access this housing through referral services from our police department, who often transport our homeless to various locations, through 180 Place and others, so that they can actually have a place to live and a place to stay. We know that having housing promotes stability. Just like you and I have a home, these individuals need homes. And I can assure you, as we've looked at this across the country, it has made a difference in the turnaround of these individuals' lives. And so, that is what we are advocating for. As this pallet housing is established, these individuals have the ability to access the services that the Hope Center provides. And again, we have a staff currently of about eight individuals. Naturally, that would have to be increased. But while we do that, we would also increase our partnership with other agencies in our community so that we are assuring them, and those of you that support this effort, that we are providing them every opportunity to be successful. Now, having said that, will there be some that fall through the cracks? Absolutely. But the success rate that we've seen across the country, when we're able to provide housing and the wraparound services lends to greater success. So we thank you in advance for your thoughtfulness on this and your consideration of the request. Thank you.
Yeah, I do need to clicker. You want me to go over there, or should I?
You just want to, you know, kind of drive the machine, certainly.
Yeah, why don't we just? So, again, Ms. Johnson covered a lot of this. This was a presentation that we did for our council, which was very supportive of this. And just for clarity, the Hope Center and the 501(c)(3), it's already been set up. And the idea is to take it from a city alone initiative, which has had, you know, success, but not nearly the amount of success it could be if it was expanded, to having it be a regional collaboration. So we would all be partners in this endeavor. So here is an example of the units themselves. This is the location that is up on the neck area, which is, well, it's not around neighborhoods. Where these things are located is a big concern. A lot of neighborhoods don't want them nearby, but you do need to have access to public transportation. And this does have that. So this is where the city is building a large office building and fleet services building, and we have about two acres left over that could provide for this. And the idea is, again, the city would fund approximately $4 million towards the Hope Center building itself. It would be leased to this entity for approximately a dollar. So that would be our cost, not a shared cost. These pallets would be behind it. We have a room for about 60 to 80 on them, depending how they're configured. You have, in this scenario, this layout, we have a bathroom in the middle with shower facilities. It would be surrounded by eight units. Those are a pod, so there'd be approximately 10 of those. And again, you can subtract this, you can add to this. It's very flexible, depending on what the need and the demand is. Again, we're looking at building something that will be attractive. This is laid out. There's been a lot of programming that's going on, and what's needed in the community for these, providing these wraparound services. And here are the basic economics, folks. As you pointed out, the cost of the building is approximately $4 million. We're getting a pretty good deal on it because it's incorporated in a roughly $60 million redevelopment or development that the city is doing. It's a lot of site work and all that. You get some economies of scale. And then when you go to the pallet homes themselves, we're looking at about $5.5 million total to start. And so, the way we've broken this down is we're looking at Charleston and Berkeley County to take approximately half of that, and then the municipalities that want to participate to take the other half. So approximately speaking, $2.75 million between the county, and I'm assuming it would be Berkeley, who has expressed interest. Dorchester has declined, and Charleston County. And then the cities have broken it down. You know, we'd love to have every city in the tri-county participate because they all have this issue, and that has been very clear when we've met at cog-related functions. But I think this was a metric that just said, okay, cities that are over 40,000 people. So you've got Goose Creek, you've got City of Charleston, you've got Mount Pleasant, North Charleston, Town of Somerville. And so, if you break it down on a prorata basis, based on population, which is the only way I could really think to do it, in this scenario, Charleston County would be paying approximately 63% of the counties and Berkeley the balance. So that would amount to an initial investment of $1.75 million. So that is what we are asking you to tentatively to commit to funding to this effort over the next 12 months, to get it up off the ground. A lot of woods left to be chopped. More details will need to be provided. We'll have to see how many of these other entities are willing to commit. You are the first, besides city council from City of Charleston, which has been very much behind this endeavor. So this is how we've broken it down. And, you know, happy to discuss how and where we got to these numbers. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but this is the general idea. And if, say, the Town of Mount Pleasant doesn't commit or doesn't want to join, they don't have to join. They just wouldn't be able to have, be able to use the facility. I mean, that's the idea. It's for those that want to be partners in this, as a place to bring folks that, as Ms. Johnson said, fall through the cracks. So that's the gist of it. We're not looking for a firm guaranteed 1.75 right now. We know we need to bring a little bit more detail, but what we're looking for is a contingent commitment from you all, subject to more details to follow in a collaborative way. We want you to have a voice in this. We want you to have your expertise, your staff's expertise on how this could be done. It is a bit of a work in progress, but again, a lot of work has gone into this to date. And I will just say that while there are other ideas on how better to do this, this is one of those situations that I would not let perfection be the enemy of good. This is a growing problem that we all have, and doing nothing, in my mind, is not an option. So, happy to answer any questions. That is our presentation on this issue.
Thank you so very much, Mayor Cogswell. And to Ms. Gianna Shaw Johnson, council members, any questions? Yes, Mr. Pryor.
So who would be doing the annual cost of staffing? So the city is going to take that responsibility on?
That's a good question there. So the idea is that this would be a regional initiative. So whoever is partners in it, it's about a million five annual budget. So the budget, operating budget, would be, you know, you would look to private funds, grants, et cetera, to help pay for it. And the state has proven to be, when there's a proof of concept and it shows that it works, they've been pretty supportive of efforts, for example, in the city of Columbia where they've done this. But if you're unable to get anything like that, it would fall on the original partnership. It would be, in this case, I've shown it, where the county would be obligating, if no other funds come in, approximately $500,000 a year to move it forward, which frankly, I would say you're spending a lot more than that on this issue and not having, I would say, the results that you need to have. So coming together, I think this is a very cost-effective way of addressing something, addressing this issue.
Lastly, is this the old southern terminal property that you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
All right.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you all being here tonight. Item three, resolutions.
Move for approval A and B.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay, the ayes have it. Item four, the consent agenda. 4A, Holland's Road Drainage
Move for approval A through F.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, the ayes have it. Item five, Public Services Directorate, 5A, US 17 Main Road Segment A.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Posers nay, the ayes have it. Reality Check 2.0, item 6A, is a request for us to consider. You would see the amount. This comes out of council contingency. I believe we've done this before in the past. Reality Check is a regional plan. Would you like to come explain it? Is somebody here to? No. And so, this is something that came to us, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And so, we've done this before in the past, and they've requested again for us to sponsor the exercise, and it is presented here in the information that you receive. So that's a request to consider.
And the amount is $10,000?
Yes, sir. It's coming out of council contingency.
Move for approval.
Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, the ayes have it. All right, so Mr. Kabrowski.
B, it's, do you want me to read it all out, or I'm just?
Oh, you brought it, so.
I brought it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is a procurement ordinance amendment, and it's, changes are needed to the Charleston County's procurement ordinance to, one, increase transparency, and, two, ensure council's approval of large contracts. This can be accomplished without an undue burden on staff. One, increase transparency. It has recently come to light that without council approval, consultants were hired to influence policy and policymakers. Two specific cases are the consulting agreements with Jerome Hayward and Christie Hall. Policy issues and policy-level discussions among council members are the purview of council, and therefore all such contracts must be approved by council. To provide the appropriate level of policy oversight by council, it is hereby resolved that the county's procurement ordinance be revised as follows. Regardless, A, regardless of value, all contracts that entail influencing policy, influencing policymakers, or influencing voters shall be approved by council. B, said contracts shall not have retainers, e.g. a month charge for services, or rather, shall have services provided on an hourly basis only. C, said contract shall define the county's point of view, who shall be the sole individual to direct all activities. D, said contracts shall require a monthly report detailing all per-hour activities. This report shall be shared with all members of council within five business days of receiving it. E, said contracts shall not last for more than one year. Automatic renewal clauses shall not be included. F, said contracts should be posted on the county's website and should be easily found by members of the public. Also, with regard to the construction, engineering, and inspection CE&amp;I contract for Main Road Corridor Segment A, council voted at their July 23, 2024 meeting to, quote, authorize staff to negotiate with the most qualified firm, and if successful, award and enter into a contract. But this $25 million contract never came back to council for approval. The reason given was the cost of the CE&amp;I was contemplated in the budget for the project, and the funds were available in the roads portion of the second transportation sales tax. Approval of a budget and approval of a contract are two different things. Also, it's provided the appropriate level of fiduciary oversight by council. It is hereby resolved that the county's procurement ordinance be revised as follows. All contracts exceeding $500,000 shall be presented to council for approval, regardless if the budget for the effort associated with the contract have been previously approved by council. Two, the sources of funding for the contract shall be publicly stated as part of the approval process. And three, said contracts will be posted on the county's website and should be easily found by members of the public. With regard to the last issue about the amount of the contracts, I wasn't on council, but shortly before I was on council, it was $250,000 was the limit, and it was then up to a million. And I understand that was to be temporary because of conditions at the time. I think that I'd like to bring it back to 500 or 250,000. And with regard to the consultants, Chairman, I just like to ask, because it came up when I read about it, was with regard to the consultation agreement with Mr. Hayward, that it was my understanding, and I'd like confirmation or not, that procurement never signed off on any of that, and that no invoices were presented. And if that's true, I'd like to know if that's a fact. And second, how is that possible, and how can we prevent that from ever happening again? Because I think about $240,000 of public money was spent. And I thank Mr. Tooten for putting an end to that when he became administrator. But I ask again, is that correct? Because we have a duty for transparency, and the best way I know is to put everything out there. It's public money, not private. And if that happened, the best thing is sunlight, to correct it and acknowledge it, and then move on and make sure it never happens again. Am I correct in that? And I asked the staff that it was not approved or signed off by procurement, and no invoices were ever submitted for any of that. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Is this a motion?
So that, I was just about to ask.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Let him answer the question, since he asked, let him answer the question.
Mr., well, before doing that, because I think it's all out of order. So I don't want to remain out of order. So again, Mr. Talbert, you know, just a minute.
Is there a second then?
Because we are talking about the amendment, right? And he just read the amendment, and I thought he was still reading the amendment.
I was not.
But then morphed into discussion. And so, is there a motion for the amendment, Mr. Warman?
I will, I may not vote for this whole thing ultimately.
But for discussion sake.
I will second the motion for the amendment, to put it on the table. I would sort of send it back to Mr. Kabrowski, though.
All right. So that was a second?
That was a second.
All right, so discussion. So now, all of those things that you just said, we receive it as discussion. So, Mr. Talbert, if you would.
Yes, sir. And I thank the chairman for pointing that out. I got ahead of myself.
Yes, sir.
I was getting a little excited. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Yes, sir.
Could you repeat the question?
Thank you. We, it came to light, and I said that the best thing is transparency, so that we put everything out there, so the public knows what we're doing, and for sunshine and issues. And it came to light that the consulting contract with Mr. Hayward, there was about $240,000 in 2019 and 2020, that procurement never signed off on that, and there were no invoices submitted. And my question is, is that true? How is that possible? What can we do to ensure that that never happens again?
Invoices were submitted, so I don't know where that statement came from. Warren, want to make it clear, procurement doesn't get anybody's invoice. The invoice goes to all the user departments.
So I was given, it was, procurement did sign off on that?
Let's go back.
Okay. Okay.
That procurement did not come through the procurement office. That is the correct statement. There are procurements that do not come through our office because it went through the administrator's office. So therefore, we were not involved in the process of hiring him for whatever services the sheriff wanted him to perform for, the sheriff's department. So, no, we were not a part of that.
Did he provide, were the invoices, they provide time, or this, were there any invoices that showed how much time was performed for that?
Anything regarding what work he did, what time was on his invoices, we would have no knowledge of it.
Who would have knowledge of it, sir?
That would be the sheriff's department.
I thought he did things for the county, not only the sheriff.
That contract that you referenced did not come through, so therefore, he provided service for the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department is the one who hired him for the work that he did.
So there was no services at any time by J.S. Hayward Consulting for Charleston County other than the sheriff's department?
There was other work that was performed by his company.
Pursuant to his consulting contract with the county?
Correct.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. I'm only talking about now, then, you've explained adequately the sheriffs. What about the consulting work that J.S. Hayward Consulting LLC did for Charleston County? Were those signed off by procurement?
No.
Were invoices submitted for those for time spent?
Yes.
And why was it ended?
Bill Tooten ended it, one, on the county side because the work had been performed and terminated the contract, when he became county administrator.
And my second question, then, in January, well, say, there's a current consulting agreement with Fire Consulting.
Yes.
LLC.
Yes.
That the contract was signed in September of 2024.
Correct.
At $12,500 a month.
Yes.
And invoices have been paid from October of 2024 through March of 2025.
Correct.
And as before last week, when it came, or the last meeting we had here for the Finance Committee, or the, you know, when it first came up, neither the current chairman nor the vice chairman knew that that existed, but yet, we have invoices, and it talks about that consulting, consulting with members of county council about policy. How is that possible that some of us didn't know about it, that were council members notified of that consultancy?
That is a non-competitive procurement with Fire, and the way the ordinance reads is the county administrator has up to $1 million threshold for sole source, non-competitive procurement. This falls under non-competitive procurement. Non-competitive procurements, we go through a process to vet any request that comes from any department to hire any consultant for any work. So therefore, this came through procurement, through the proper channels. It was brought to us by the Public Works Department, said this firm is going to help them realign, look at their department, look at some deficiencies to make themselves improved. We looked at it, we checked the box on every item that Fire was going to present to Public Works. We submitted it to the county administrator, it was approved, and the Fire Consultants started work for Charleston County Government for Public Works, to help them in a number of processes that they're doing internally, and some of their road projects currently.
What was the vehicle that some county council members knew? How is it possible that the chairman did not know until three weeks ago, and the vice chairman didn't know, because part of the invoices read about meeting with county council members about policy? Is that, was that an appropriate use of the consultancy to meet with some members of council, but not the chairman and the vice chairman?
Never, never.
About matters of policy?
Never, never.
I mean, I wonder, how was, how were council members notified that this existed? I didn't know, the chairman didn't know, and I'd like, if possible, the chairman roll call vote of which members knew or didn't know. I didn't know, and it'd be, I think, useful to try to find out how that information was conveyed, because if policy is, we have a consultant discussing policy, all members ought to know that, or no members, I would think. And that's why I wanted it public, so that all council members know what consultants we have, so we have equal access. It's not, we're not a private business. We're spending taxpayers' dollars, it's other people's money. Each one of us, we're elected by our, there's no member of council more important than any other member. We're all elected equally, and I believe all of us, if we're going to adequately represent the people who elected us, ought to have equal access and knowledge of consultants. And that's part of the reason why I want this to be public, so when they're hired, we all know it.
All right. So, thank you so much, Mr. Talbert. Mr. Tooten is going to chime in on that part. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Mr. Talbert. Mr. Vice Chairman, first and foremost, consultants are not for council, they are for employees and staff. We go and we find who are the best consultants out there. And if someone who has multiple years of experience in areas that we deal with, if there's a possibility that they're going into the private sector, we are going to possibly, depending on what we need, pursue that. General McCarty just retired as the adjutant general. We would not have anything to do with that. If Mark Hammond retired, we would not have anything, any need for that. Secretary of Agriculture. Mr. Weathers. We would not go after somebody with a cabinet level or a constitutional officer perspective. Secretary Hall retired. We build roads. We do road projects. She was not a political appointee, she was an experienced engineer that came up through the ranks at DOT, not someone that donated heavily to the campaign. We don't notify council of consultants, especially of the, Walt, how many do you have? I mean, Mr. Smalls?
We have several open air contracts for electrical, chemical, architecture.
And just, Mr. Thigpen, couple of questions for you, sir, since it seems to be under your area, based on what the vice chair said. To your knowledge, sir, were any actions taken outside of normal county procedures to retain the services of Secretary Hall?
No, sir.
Okay. Based on her experience, her background, many honors, actually including the resolution honoring her that this council passed about a year ago, do you think her compensation is fair based on the current market rates?
Yes, sir.
Did any member of county council contact you regarding her being hired?
No, sir.
Did any member of county council reach out to you during the negotiation period for hiring at a price or anything?
No, sir.
In your meetings and conversations, did she ever say that she had reached out to DOT?
No, sir. She actually made a point of when she needed to contact the DOT, or we needed to talk about the projects we wanted to talk about. She made sure that we understood that staff had to do that, make that contact with DOT.
So let me ask a question. Mr. Tooten, I heard mentioned in some of what Mr. Kowalski was saying, and I do ask, you know, this question based on my own interest and based on the fact that you just said that she was not hired, you know, to consult with county council persons or for a political purpose, but based on what I've heard, that she has met with multiple county council persons. And so she was only hired for staff.
Mr. Chairman, if I may continue, and I have one more question for Mr. Thigpen.
I just asked you that question, so I want you to answer that question.
I'm not going to answer that question because he is the one that has been dealing with this situation. I have not been consulting with her. And very simply, Mr. Thigpen, if secretary, if a member of council reached out to you and said, hey, I have a question about DOT policies and procedures, if you did not know the answer to that question, what would you do?
I would reach out to Secretary Hall or the DOT.
Or would you advise a council member to reach out to Secretary Hall or the DOT?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, again, that is certainly not what I asked, and it becomes troubling to me, simply when asking a question, but I can't get an answer from you, right?
Secretary Hall has not been involved, to my knowledge, in any policies that the county is doing. I know that she has, we have been inquiries to her of DOT policies regarding certain projects, specifically the Limehouse Bridge. I believe Mr. Boykin had a question.
Which is in my district.
You didn't have a question?
Well, I didn't really know that we had the consultant available, you know, to answer such questions, even if I did have them. Any questions that I've had, I've asked Mr. Thigpen or asked you directly, and certainly, I've been satisfied with the answers that I received. But certainly, if I knew that we had available to us a person of the caliber of Secretary Hall, I certainly would have had a list of questions potentially to ask her directly.
I understand that, but again, if a list of questions might not necessarily, it would depend on the question, sir. And let's talk, like, the Limehouse Bridge. Has the secretary been involved in the Limehouse Bridge in helping to try to get pedestrians and bicyclists over that bridge?
We've had a number of discussions with Secretary Hall about the cross-sections on the bridge, yes, sir.
And she's been intimately involved in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And those would be questions that I would ask. It's in my district. I'm a cyclist and a walker, and certainly going across from Gilligan's and whatever. I mean, I could have contemplated some questions if I then knew that it was something that potentially I could have asked her to get more clarity or some more information. I know when I met with you all last week, and Mr. Thigpen mentioned, you know, just the expansion and the ability for us potentially to add bike ped to that project, particularly based on, you know, the cost savings component, that was, I was extremely interested in that. And if I had known that earlier and potentially could have, you know, engaged her in some level of conversation, maybe I would have, but I just did not know that that was an option available to all council persons. Mr. Boykin.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make the point also that Limehouse Bridge is halfway in my district. We share it equally. And in, to that point, I've been extremely concerned about getting the pedestrian and bike access across that bridge, when we lost the standalone bridge. I know part of the reasons for that was because the DOT would not take ownership and maintain the standalone bridge, and the implications of that. So I made it my point to reach out to Mr. Thigpen with those concerns and ask those questions, and he did reach out to Secretary Hall. And in fact, I think I met with her unofficially just this last week or the week before, when she was downstairs in the cafe, and I was eating lunch, and she was coming through there. So I would avail myself any opportunity, I could speak with Secretary Hall on those issues, and so if that constitutes a, something that's out of line, I'm happy to hear about it.
Mr. Warman? First of all, I want to thank everyone, including Secretary Hall, for their efforts on Segment A. I think that that would be a clear benefit to the county. But I think, well, there's a lot of rabbit holes I could go down with this. I'll tell you, Mr. Kowalski, I'm inclined to share some of this, though, with you, to, you know, especially the part you've got here about, you know, sort of standardizing these contracts a bit and getting information to council. I am curious, I guess, a little bit, and I don't know who to direct this question to, as to how much of this we sort of already do? I mean, my understanding is that these contracts are available on the website. Am I incorrect of that understanding? I've never had occasion to go look them up, but we do not have that.
Mr. Talbert?
Mr. Talbert has that answer.
Please understand the procurement process for Charleston County Government. Any project that we bid out.
Sure.
Once we make an award, it is posted on the website, on Charleston County's website. Now, when we do non-competitive, sole-source procurements, those aren't posted. What we recommend, and we're going to do moving forward, any sole source, any non-competitive procurement for the month, let's just say, April 2025. When you come in here for the month of May, we're going to have that on the blue sheet that goes to you, and then we could also publish it on our website, so everybody will be able to see it. So therefore, there is no one questioning what has happened or what has occurred. Non-competitive procurements aren't competitively bid out. Sole source aren't competitively bid out. You actually have a firm who only provides that service, that's a sole source. Non-competitive procurements, they're done for various reasons, not particularly one reason. As Walt Smalls says, and also Eric Adams can stand up, we have a number of consulting contracts for a number of reasons, and we hire these firms. So therefore, we go through the procurement process. Some of these costs are less than $100,000, some will probably exceed $100,000, some we get off of state contract or GSA contracts. So we keep moving to keep everything going afloat, because with a lot of these projects that we have, it is about time, it is about getting the right information and making a quick snap decision to keep these things going. We some, we cannot wait. One of the main things that's happening, and I know I had a conversation with Phil Sabatino, and also with Eric Adams' department, over the last five years, especially since COVID, prices have escalated. There are projects that they're working on, and we have to come back and sit down because the price of the project has increased. So we have to go into a room, sit down, and figure out how we're going to make this work, come back to Mr. Tooten, get him to sign off on something, so that the project can continue to go.
All right. Mr. Pryor?
So, wouldn't it make sense if council members have questions, to go through the administrator first, and let the administrator send it through the proper channel? You're talking about chaos when you've got individual council members calling consultants, trying to direct them, to tell them, you know, which way to go, what to do. And Mr. Kowalski himself just said, we shouldn't have that. But if each council member is contacting consultants, that's a recipe for disaster. Now, I thought the way this work is, if council members got any questions, they go through the administrator, the administrator sends it to the proper channel or a staff member, whoever he or she at that time desires, and then it gets back to us. So if what Mr. Kowalski is trying to do to make it that each council member is going to be accessible to all consultants, then that's something I can't support, because now you're going to have people superseding the administrator in his position. And I don't think we want to go down that road right now. So I would suggest to council, if you have a question, go to the administrator. And if the administrator says, well, I'll direct you to this consultant if needed, or I can't get an answer, I'll call somebody, I think it stops a lot of chaos, and it keeps things the way it should go in the chain of command. But, I mean, but asking that each member have access to all consultants, I don't think that's the way government should be ran. You know, that's just my opinion, and what I've always done is, if I got a question, I call the administrator, and he directs me to the department head, and then, you know, I get my answer. It's up to them how I get my answer, not me to go find the answer. And so that's what I would caution this council, to be very, very careful, because you're going to have a breakdown in process, where people are just going to bypass the administrator and go straight to somebody else, and then that's where the confusion starts.
All right. Mr. Moody?
Thanks, sir. Or one comment, I guess, and a couple of questions for different folks, but I would piggyback on what Mr. Pryor said. This is a administrator council form of government. If you went to your training in Columbia when you were elected, and we all did, that was the first thing you were told. So we hire him or her to do a job for us, and if you don't like the way he or she is doing the job, then you take it up with he or she. So that, we got to keep that in mind. But my question, you mentioned, maybe a question from Mr. Gou or Ms. Rona, the $1 million that the administrator, we did that in 2022.
May 2022.
Have we looked at what the purchasing power, you mentioned COVID inflation, that sort of things, what maybe that $1 million in '22 can purchase now? If you don't have the answer, that's fine, we can take it up another time.
Mr. Moody, my staff and I, over the past couple of weeks, have been taking a look at that. Like I said, I'm always in contact with Phil Sabatino, Walt, Eric, Steve, Thigpen. We recognize, and over the years, and I've been in this position for 15 years, and we have made a number of changes to the procurement ordinance, because we realize the price of goods and services go up exponentially. They don't stay at one level for us. We will bid a job out at one price, we'll get into it, and next thing we know, the price is going up again. So a lot of times, we are strapped. So a million dollars, yes, that's, that's, you know, a lot of folks look at us, well, that's a lot, that's high, whatever. But when we sit down and we start taking a look at it, what we have to do sometimes, it becomes very challenging, because we may have a serious situation, just to give you some context on it, we have a serious situation. We respect the fact that when you come in here and meet, but I know with Walt, and I know with Mr. Thigpen, there are times when we need to get something done, and we have to wait for you all to come in here to approve. It slows us down. We got to roof this leak, and especially one of our older buildings, we got to move very, very fast. We got to move very, very fast. And the same thing goes for environmental management. We have to move fast, because as Thomas Q. mentioned, the price for dirt has gone up extremely high. Price for lumber is going up. Price for gas changes all the time. So we have a whole lot of moving pieces and parts to procurement. It's not an easy fix, it's not one, once price sets off. We have to take a look at everything individually and make quick decisions, very quick decisions.
I think a discussion point for another time, but I might be open to considering increasing that again. I think we've got enough on our plate tonight to talk about, but I would be open to having that discussion. Mr. Boykin, I thought you were going to move a little bit further with the Main A and the Limehouse Bridge. Bridge, because that our consultant...we got this project back on track with that consultant, Mr. Thickepin, I believe. Am I correct? The state will maintain it. There were some significant money saves, I believe, associated with getting this project back on track. Could you outline those for us, please, sir?
Yes, Councilman Moody. When we brought you all the design bill contract and we excluded the bridge, we committed to council to continue to work on avenues to get bicycle and pedestrians across the bridge. We utilized Ms. Hall's expertise in engineering and other things to come up with some alternatives that we've pitched to the DOT. The alternative that you all just approved, that staff moved forward with tonight, the price tag on that's about $8 to $10 million. The standalone bridge that we did not award back in the time was a $40 million bridge.
So we didn't take a $40 million bridge, because we were going to have to maintain it going forward cost, and we're going to get the same close to result for 10?
Yes, sir.
So we've got a...so Mr. Tootin hired a consultant for $12,500 a month, and we got a $30 million benefit?
Yes, sir.
What are we talking about?
Vice Chair Kowalski.
I just wanted to continue. The prior consultant was hired in September of 2024. The invoice dated October 22, 2024, says consultation with members of Charleston County Council regarding state policies. The invoice for December of 2024, submitted on December 13 of 2024, says had several policy-level discussions with members of council. The one is recently as March of 2025, for services for February of 2025, to had policy and process discussions with a member of council. And again, I submit that policy is what council does. And to me, when the chairman doesn't even know this consultant existed, the vice chairman doesn't know, and other members of this council who I talked to didn't know, it's apparent that some members knew and some didn't. And I just think that in a public body, again, we're all elected equally. I don't understand how that can be. And we also heard from council members about when we had the library debate, what other counties do. And I...members of the public have gotten me in Greenville County, which is comparable to us, that their policy that's in effect now, a single purchase up to $20,000, non-competitive quote, as long as pricing is fair and reasonable, this can be paid by a purchasing card or a purchase order. I'm sorry, it's $2,000. Between $2,000 and $1,750, minimum of two quotes are needed, must come through procurement for a purchase order. Between $7,000 and 1 cent and $35,000, minimum of three quotes are needed, must come through procurement of a purchase order. All purchases over $35,000 must go out to a formal solicitation. And then sole-source purchases, the requesting department must fill out a sole-source justification form explaining details of the purchase. Procurement will research the request to confirm if it is a sole source, may ask the vendor for documentation about the sole source. The procurement director will review all information, either approve the sole source or reject. If rejected, this possible person may need to go out to a formal solicitation. So there's no dollar amount limit on a sole source. So why are we different than...I mean, we held on the library thing that no other county has done this, but yet Greenville County, most comparable to us in size, has much different limits than this. And I recall, in terms of the...we're a public body. We had $250,000 limits, and now it's a million. I think that all money being spent still should come back to the council. And you made a...I didn't bring it up, but also, members of the public have done Freedom Information Act requests about what contact the consultant had with the State Department Transportation. It shows back as early as October. There was direct contact with the Department of Transportation about some of the very things you're talking about here. And I asked our attorney then, since everybody else brought it up, would that have been proper at that time in September, since the contract was in October and the consultant retired in March?
Mr. Pryor.
Yes. One more question before Mr. Tolbert sits, because there's been a lot of misinformation, I think. So out of that $281,000 that the papers said the county spent with JS, here with a consultant, how much of that was from the sheriff's department and how much of it was from county council? Because I think there's a big difference there. I mean, just out of the top of your head, you know, you don't have to...you know, you can bring the final figures on Tuesday, but I think it needs to be...
Mr. Pryor, of the 281, $200,000 was from the sheriff's office, $81,000 was from Charleston County. That's how it was broken down.
All right. But so, Mr. Kowalski, I think your $200,000 question needs to be addressed to the former sheriff, not our staff at county council, because they had...
Two times removed.
Yeah, two times removed, Sheriff Cannon, because our staff has nothing to do with who the sheriff hires and fires. They had their own procurement department, if I'm not mistaken, and they put out their own solicitorial bids. So I wish, when this stuff happens, it wouldn't beat up on our staff as if our staff were responsible for the whole $281,000, and it was only $81,000 listening to the administrator...I mean, to the administrator just said it just now. So I wish that would get, you know, differentiated from saying county council did this, because, you know, putting something out and people reading misinformation, they never corrected and put out the proper information. So I hope you would go back to whoever that sources and give them the proper information to go back to the paper, so they can put out that $200,000 that was spent with, you know, former Sheriff Cannon, and maybe he can give you an answer.
Mr. Boykin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Kowalski, I'm up here about every week, and most of these folks out here, they see my face every week up here, because I've got a lot of issues in my district. One of the biggest is transportation. I'm sorry, Mr. Thickepin and Mr. Toma, how much I wear you all out, but I mean, and Mr. Adams. That's how I became aware of Secretary Hall, because I have a lot of transportation issues. And I ask a lot of questions, and I'm up here all the time trying to find a way to push things through and get the information I need to serve as well as I can. So I don't know if you have all those transportation issues in your district like I do, because we've been left behind for some time, and now it's come home to roost. So I want to ask our administrator, was this supposed to be a secret? I mean, you know, nobody was supposed to know about this? I don't think that's the case.
No, sir, that was not the case. We would not necessarily notify council of consultant issues or of personnel issues or anything like that.
All right. Vice Chair Kowalski, and then Mr. Werman. And I think we're going to bring this, you know, discussion to a conclusion.
Well, Mr. Pryor, thank you for the point. I thought that the gentleman cleared that up. But then again, just to make things clear, as you said, for the $81,000 that was paid to JS Hayward Consulting, there were no procurement, never signed off on any of that $81,000. We're restricted to that. My first question, and whether it was from the sheriff's office or us, it's all Charleston County money from our budget, in that it comes from taxpayers' money, all $280,000. But with regard to the $81,000, that was dislimited to the non-sheriffs that came from Charleston County for consultation. I believe the last time I asked was to promote 526 with the state. None of that was signed off by procurement. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
All right. Mr. Werman.
Mr. Kowalski, I'll...there were a lot of, again, components to this that I wanted to explore, but I think we need to wrap it up here. I'm not at a position where I can join you on requiring council approval for any of this. And, you know, I just don't know what the no retainers and the monthly report and all of that sort of, you know, point of contact, I don't know what that's going to do to the operations that we currently have. What I am hearing is that it would probably be beneficial for council to have sort of uniform notification of these types of contracts. So if we could pare this down, and I think Mr. Tolbert just indicated they were putting into place a blue sheet procedure...
Yes.
...that I cannot verbatim recite. But if we could pare this down to enshrining that in the county ordinance, I'll...I can second that, and I'll vote for you with that. And that's maybe a starting point to getting this done. And, you know, I realize that would be about 10% of what you're asking for here, but I can join you for that 10%, and I would ask you to accept that amendment, and I would, I guess, sort of double-second it if you can.
Can I ask one question? Would you agree then to...with the consulting to make it time-based per hour? Because now, we don't know if it's one hour a month or 1,000 hours a month. And I think some basis...because remember, it's public money. I feel people have a right to know if we're paying somebody $150,000 a year, $12,500 a month, how much time is going into that? And that would ask...I think it would be better than what we have now, and I would agree to that if we...so we all know something. If you would consider adding that, I just put it out there for that.
I'm going to have to say, no, I agree with you that that would be ideal. What I don't know currently is whether we're going to be able to get folks to agree to that or whether our current contracts with folks would comport with that. And I don't want to have some sort of mass contract termination as of, you know, whenever this would hopefully get through county council next week, or I don't want to handcuff folks' ability to hire consultants, you know, on short-term notice or what, you know, as we kind of heard from Mr. Tolbert, that these things come up, and sometimes they're not, you know, they're not more than $100,000, and they're really sort of maybe not as...I realize this is stated as being policy-based, but it sounds like the line between policy-based and what is maybe more day-to-day business is going to be difficult to draw. So I have concerns about what the knock-on effects would be. I'm happy to consider that in the future, maybe once I get some more information, but I can't add that to it, unfortunately.
Mr. Sasse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that the hourly thing that Mr. Werman was just talking about, when we have a need for a consultant, like Mr. Smalls has one sometimes with the radios or the radio towers or the parking garages or all the other things that we deal with, we hire that consultant to do a certain job, and then they go away. And when we're finished with them, we don't pay them anymore. And that's my understanding. So we hire them for a specific job, they do a specific job, and when that job is over, they go somewhere else, and we don't pay them anymore. And so it's to our benefit that we can hire somebody like that to help us get out of the bind. And I don't want to put...I don't want to put restraints on them. Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Darby.
Don't draw me into that one, sir.
All right. Thank you so much. I just wanted to make certain that everybody had an opportunity. So the amendment was not accepted.
For the point of, it's obvious from the discussion tonight, if I go forward, I probably won't get any of this, is my sense of it or I might have. So I'd rather leave tonight, and I think it would be a value, so we don't have, like, some members of a special council and other members of another council who don't know what's going on. So I think we'd be better off if we all know when consultants are hired, so we all are equal here. So I would second the motion for tonight, for the public notice issue.
Would receive...you would accept his amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kowalski has a motion on the floor now to go through what he said. So he has to withdraw that motion, and then Mr. Werman has to make...
No, sir.
Hold on, let me explain, sir.
Yes, sir.
If we vote for his motion, his motion passes with the amendment. So Mr. Kowalski would have to withdraw his original motion, and then Mr. Werman would have to make the motion asking that these contracts be sent out to county council on a blue sheet.
So my understanding is that Mr. Kowalski made the original motion of all of these things that we have, that he read.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Werman temporarily seconded that for the point of discussion. Mr. Werman then offered a friendly amendment to the motion, saying that he would go this far with the 10%, and we were waiting for Mr. Kowalski to accept that friendly amendment. Mr. Kowalski just conceded to accept the friendly amendment, and so that's where I think we are.
He needs to withdraw his motion, Chairman, because the amendment is tied to his original motion.
Mr. Salisbury.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pryor, I think what Mr. Werman's amendment is, if I understand it, is there...nothing is in the motion except...
The blue sheet.
Including uniform notification.
Well, he needs to explain it like that.
I can explain it that way. I can clarify.
That was my understanding.
The amendment is basically, and...
Kill everything he did.
The amendment is to basically narrow this down to the point that reads F. Said contract shall be posted on the county's website and shall be easily found by members of the public. And it is, you know, intended to be consistent with what Mr. Tolbert outlined as a procedure that apparently is...
The Werman and I are...we have ESP, and we're classmates and everything. So when he said 10%, I knew that the 10% was just that.
All right. Can I ask one question then?
Don, let's go to voting.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that the blue sheet was included as part of it.
Yes. That was... Point of order, this is a question on the motion. Is it allowable for the first motion to go ahead, and if that gets defeated, can we then bring it up again for his, or is that...
Cleanest way to do it.
所以他正在拒绝他的接受命令
I don't want to withdraw it. I wanted to say, if I brought it up and I didn't get a second, does that end the matter for tonight?
The attorney.
I still think it's a worthy...
If you want to take two votes, then you would need to withdraw your approval of the amendment that, as Mr. Werman has posed it, so that your first motion can, if he continues to second your first motion.
Again, for us...
So he's already said that he is not going to second, and then he offered the friendly amendment. And so I think I know parliamentary procedure well enough to know that we were waiting for you to either accept it or not. Accepted the 10% or not?
Oh, accepted, but just a clarification, does that mean we still have to approve these things, or just the...
No, we don't. So when you accept it, that means we...these contracts shall be posted on the county's website and shall be easily found by members of the public, and a blue sheet will also be provided to county council members at the time, so that we are aware of those contracts. I believe that's...
And again, please, so we voted on the original one, and it wasn't second, are we still allowed to go to the second motion? Yes or no?
So, Mr. Kowalski...
Second the original one.
Okay, then, okay. For tonight, it's obvious that they come out of this, at least with notice is better than no, but I...reluctance, because I still think we...it's a matter of public money, but to get this through tonight, yes, I'll agree to that.
All right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just...I do have a point of order, because I understood what Mr. Werman said to be perhaps different than what Mr. Kowalski just said. In regards to the 10%, this item F, it is my understanding that you are attempting to support the presentation as Mr. Tolbert outlined with regards to the blue sheet process, which I do not believe gets posted to the county's website. Is that correct, Mr. Tootin?
Blue sheets do not.
Right. So I just want to make sure, because these are two different processes that seem to be being combined into one. The blue sheet is for the notification to council. That is correct.
And the posting on the website is the language in F.
That's exactly right. So I...
I would say I would like both, yes. I think it should be on the website.
Ms. Salisbury captured a motion, so if she can read that, that might be helpful.
So I think Mr. Werman's amendment, that I understand Mr. Kowalski accepted, is only to approve item F and the uniform notification by a blue sheet. That's everything. Item F on this sheet and blue sheets.
All right. Mr. Moody.
So all we're being voting on now is Mr. Werman's, one thing, the 10 minutes of stuff he read off goes away?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Ms. Hamm and her supporters will pass out the animal society contract. All of us received this via email, but this is the fresh-off-the-press contract with the amended amounts that were already articulated to each council person. And so we want you to have this in hand as we enter this conversation.
It's okay. It's okay.[1749.15]
Thank you so much.
It's okay. It's okay. Oh, she said she made a note.
All right, so we all have had this document, at least in its previous form, that has not substantially changed, except on page two of the contract. If you look at the contract itself, page two, you will see that amended amount. That amount does not surprise us, because that's an amount that you've seen. And so we will either receive a motion, or, well, at least a motion, so we can start any discussion.
First to approve. Unless we need to go into executive session.
No, we don't. Probably moved and seconded, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to say, I am so glad that we have reached this point. It has been a long time coming, and somewhat of an arduous process, but I will say, there was one specific change that occurred that I feel brought a significant amount of reason and rationale to the discussion. I want to say thank you to Mr. Brady, who also serves on Charleston County Council as the Government Relations Director at the Animal Society, who joined them not, sorry, city council, not too long ago. And I appreciate his efforts to contact each council member. I appreciate sincerely the back-and-forth, the exchange that we have been able to have, very reasonable. We have had extraordinary cooperation from Pet Helpers, and they have been very accommodating of our emergency needs under those circumstances. I am still a bit concerned about the per-animal cost, which is significantly lower at Pet Helpers. I understand that the Animal Society offers a higher level of service. They employ licensed veterinarians and certain services, but I am still concerned, we are, again, spending taxpayer dollars here, that most on this council seemed very concerned about spending wisely. So this number on page two of the contract still concerns me. It also concerns me that no council authority was provided to any specific member of council to negotiate this number, and so it is council's number to negotiate if the administrator is not doing so himself. So I would hope that we can discuss this number with the Animal Society, and that it would be more in line with what we are paying for our services with Pet Helpers. But, Mr. Brady specifically, thank you for your engagement in this process.
Just wanted to note that, again, that number that you see on page two, Beaufort County Animal Services, which is a government agency, their cost per animal is $567. Greenville County Animal Care, which is a government shelter, $712 per animal. Cometto Lifeline, one of two accredited nonprofit animal shelter clinics in South Carolina, and Columbia is $708 per animal. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for looking that up, but frankly, I don't care, because the market has been set here by Pet Helpers. It's been set in transparency, it's been set in responsiveness, it's been set in record-keeping, it's respect, it's been set in collaboration with county leadership. It's the relationship we've been looking for, for years. We got nothing but stonewalling from the prior provider, kicking our auditors out of there, recording council members' conversations. This is not part of... Now, I don't disagree that we've got to have two vendors to cover this large county, but how can we go back to that vendor who has done everything we've asked them to do, that charges us $390 a dog and $370 a cat, and say, we're gonna pay this other group $467? I'm not gonna tell them that. And if they have a higher quality of care, Ms. Honeycutt, I don't know that that's the case. Maybe it is, they have full-time veterinarians, maybe it is. If we concede that, being 20, 30% higher than our other vendor, it's just unacceptable. That's just my opinion. This is a partnership that has been really, really bad, and to now come back and just say, throw this number out there, it's very concerning to me.
All right. Anyone from this side of the dais? Mr. Sasse?
I'll be there in a minute.
Okay, Mr. Boykin.
Yeah, I've got to agree with Mr. Moody on this. I want to have a contract with the Animal Society. I agree, we need more than one vendor. But again, you know, I'm not worried about what Beaufort-Greenville, anybody else is doing. We have another vendor in this county, this $87 per animal on average, lower than their price, which is roughly 18%. I think the issue is, you know, this is all about the services they provide, so I support getting a contract done with them, but I'm hung up over the number, and I agree with Ms. Honeycutt, so I can't support it in its present form, but simply for that one reason. So if they're willing to renegotiate and come down and get close to the number for Pet Helpers, I'd be willing to entertain it.
All right, Mr. Werman.
Listen, I'm gonna vote the other way on this, but I actually share those concerns, and, you know, I do think that, you know, this needs to be as close to a market price as we can get. I guess what I would say is, people can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding, when you say that we need two vendors, is that they do not have the capacity at Pet Helpers to do this. So there is an extent to which we're in a bit of a monopoly situation, where I think the Charleston Animal Society is the only ones with the capacity to do it. I think that puts them in a slightly different position, and, you know, I am also cognizant of the fact that this cleans up some of the issues we had with the previous contract, also has a 30-day termination notice period, so if, you know, someone buys up a bunch of land and says, we can do it for $300, we could terminate it in 30 days and be right back where you want to be with a sort of market uniform price. But I don't think we can put ourselves in a situation where, you know, there is only a single shelter, because my understanding is that Pet Helpers does not have the capacity to do that. And there's some differences that I do recognize, where I don't think they have the same obligations to take animals that the Animal Society has. Obviously, you know, I think there's a somewhat different scope of the services for this one as well. So listen, I think, you know, while I would ideally like it to be the same number, I recognize there's some legitimate reasons for it not to be, which is why I'm willing to support this number. But for the record, it's $77 more is the difference we're talking about, about $390 to $467. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Kibrowski.
Well, I want to thank Councilman Werman for more eloquently saying what I was gonna say, so I'll save the time not to say that, but I will comment that we spent about 45 minutes just arguing from some of the same council members that vehemently objected to time requirements for consultants, but yet complaining about, you know, if I have to, I don't understand how we cannot require consultants at 12,500 a month, or whatever, to do, so what time you're doing, but we're complaining about them. I'd rather pay for the suffering of sentient living creatures and the pain and suffering they have than contributing to the retirement of consultants, of bureaucrats. I don't understand how, we can argue, on one hand, we don't require time requirements for work, on the other hand, to make a crusade out of, on the other hand, and I think we need to be consistent. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sasse.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two things. The hourly rate that somebody charges to solve a problem is related more to their 50 years of experience and how good a heart surgeon that person is. It's not, it's, it's, this thing about, this thing about wanting somebody to tell you they spent an hour and a half on something, or two hours on something, the bigger quest, the bigger thing is, what did they, what did they, what did they resolve? What did they fix? You know, and I think that's, I think that's a bigger thing. But back to this, back to this, so, and I've been part of this the whole time, and do we have, do we have protection that we won't be having moratoriums again and not accepting animals?
So in the contract, there is a clause that says that animal control officers can take animals to the Animal Society even during times of moratoriums. So that would not restrict or preclude them from receiving those animals.
Okay, so, okay.
That's in here.
So that's solved.
That's solved.
That's solved. I am concerned about this compensation total of $2 million. That bothers me.
I think it's at up to?
Yeah, up to, not to exceed $2 million. I hope, I hope we're not having to spend that much money.
This is for animals brought from the unincorporated area.
Right, right. And so I'm very concerned about Pet Helpers that have gone overboard to help us, they've stepped up when we had a problem, and quite frankly, I think the main reason we're getting this resolved is because another player was out there. And not to, not to undermine what everybody's done, what you've done, and what other people have done to get us to this point, but we couldn't get any help when our auditors went over there. We couldn't ever get them to tell us how many animals they picked up. And when we had that first meeting about a month or two ago, when Mr. Darby came in and got everybody to work together, all of a sudden, we had five years' worth of figures, but they'd never given us a single figure before. And so I want to get two contracts. I want to have two, but I'm not happy with them both, with them being separate amounts. I think they should be, they should be closer. I don't know what the answer is there, but, but I don't think that, I think that both of them are providing pretty much the same service. Thank you, sir.
All right. I think we're gonna go to a roll-call vote at this time. I did have occasion of going to Pet Helpers and spent significant time over there with them, and certainly in that industry of care for animals, they were so complimentary of the Animal Society. They looked for them to be partners, because they recognize also that their capacity is limited.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I may have a solution to get everybody...
Let's go to a roll-call vote. Thank you so much.
Mr. Boykin?
No.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
No.
Mr. Kibrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
No.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Aye.
The motion passes, five ayes, four nays.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to come up with another motion for our staff to go back to Pet Helpers and negotiate, you know, whatever we're paying the Animal Society, we pay them as well too, because they're doing the same service.
Second. Probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay.
Nay.
Thank you so... All right.
The motion is to go pay the Pet Helpers the same amount we're paying the Animal Society?
For the same services.
No.
Same services.
Same services.
I don't think it's the same services.
Nay. Please record me as a nay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion to Tuesday to get more information.
Thank you so much.
Okay? I'll get more information, and then I'll come back on Tuesday.
Thank you so much.
All right. And I know it may not be appropriate, Ms. Salisbury, and she's so faithful...
Yes, sir.
But Salisbury, since we're talking about animals...
Yes, sir.
Her cat, Charlie, was ill, and she had to take her cat in, and as a result, Charlie's no longer with us. And so I think this becomes even more important to make certain that services, particularly to our animals, are accessible, and it has nothing to do with what we're doing right now. But since we're talking about animals, my sensitivity, especially since I know that just today, they had to put Charlie down. So let's continue, as we talk about these issues, to be very sensitive, because again, services are provided by all of these agencies, and people need them, and when they access them in their times of need, these agencies are there to help provide those services. So I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that Charlie has gone on today.
Thank you.
On Tuesday, we'll discuss it further to see exactly where this goes, and we pray that Tuesday remains the same as tonight, and if that's the case, then we will move forward with working with the administrator to execute this contract. All right? We have several executive session items that have been articulated. Our special county council, we've already approved that to go into executive session. Our human resources committee, we've already approved that to go into executive session. Our environmental management committee, we've already approved that to go into executive session. When we get into executive session, we will take the special council first, the environmental management second, and the human resources last, because it has more implications to employee evaluations, and probably will take the longest. My estimation, if then we were to put a time limit on this, or at least request, would be, we'll be back there for a long time until we're done. And so all of these matters are so important that we're not going to rush, and so those persons who wish to leave, please leave. And when we come back, when we're finished, then we will report out if there's anything to report. I will entertain a motion based on all of those suspended committee meetings to unify all of these, based on the reasons for going into executive sessions, to go into an executive session.
So may...
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Administrator, Mr. Chairman, so your staff is not needed. Will you let them go home, so they won't sit there for now?
From executive session where no votes were taken and no decisions were made, we're going to start with our special county council meeting. That would be executive session item two A Grantham Homes LLC versus
I'd move for committee recommendation.
Second. You moved and seconded. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All motioners?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
All right, thank you so much. The next executive session would be the environmental management committee. Mr. Moody, we turn that back over to you.
You, did we have a motion on the floor?
I move for committee recommendation.
Second.
Move for attorney's recommendation and negotiate
That's right.
With Republic.
Second.
Questions or further comment? All the favorably sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Middleton, back to you.
We reconvene the human resources committee. Mr. Kibrowski?
Motion on the table.
Mr. Kibrowski, I would move that we approve the contract with the attorney as discussed in executive session.
Is there a second? Second. All motioners in favor?
Aye.
All motioners opposed?
Nay. Any other, well, no comments today because it's a motion to adjourn.
Your committee?
During my committee.
And so that concludes all of our business this evening. Good evening.